It is five o'clock, so we will get today's meeting going. Thank you all from the public that are here. And first thing, we got to approve the minutes from the last meeting, which was from a couple of weeks ago. You guys all got a chance to review them? Yes? All right. Oh, no, shoot, sorry, we got to do roll call first. All right, roll call. Steve Ball.
Here.
Phoebe Benziger.
Here.
Jan Chastain is absent. Chad Huffman.
Here.
Delphine Jado is absent. Richard Rogers.
Here.
Ronald Cairns.
Here.
And I'm David Fishering, and I'm here. Okay, so now the minutes from last meeting. I will entertain a motion to approve.
Make that motion.
All right, thanks, Richard. Anybody second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. Minutes are approved. William, any additions or deletions to the agenda?
No, there are none.
Okay. In that case, we've got four agenda items today. And we got a conditional use permit for Vemos Gear, The Falls at Valley Ranch subdivision, preliminary plat and plan development, Eagle Ranch South rezone, and the Hilltop North addition. And with that, William, I will let you take over.
Actually, we're going to let Jace take it over here.
Okay.
Good evening, planning commissioners. We're working on some technical difficulties, but we should have this here in just a second.
Not the best way to start off my first presentation to you, I suppose, huh? All right.
We're going to need two men.
Well, good evening. Just for the record, I'm Jace Hawkwalt. I'm the recently hired planning manager here for the city of Montrose. The item in front of you this evening, or I should say, this first item, is a conditional use permit by Vemos Gear Incorporated to allow automotive and other vehicle sales on the property located at 1912 South Townsend Avenue. This is a vicinity map of the subject site with that actual subject site outlined in red here on the screen. So just for some background of Vemos Gear and the business itself, so Vemos Gear sells motorcycle and utility vehicle, or UTV, accessories at its current location. So this site already has an existing building on it along Townsend, as you kind of saw in the last aerial photo. They are seeking to expand their business model by offering the sale of motorcycles and UTVs actually onsite in two designated outdoor locations. I'll show a picture here shortly of those. These sales would be conducted during regular business hours, and the vehicles would be stored indoors during all non-business hours. Those business hours are there on the screen for you. It should also be noted that there is an interior garage in the building, kind of as I mentioned. This is where those vehicles would actually be stored in the evening hours, so they wouldn't be just stored outdoors. This is just a quick zoning map of the site itself here, shaded in purple. That shade just designates the B2 or highway commercial zone district there. Just a quick overview of the zoning regulations. So the highway commercial district is intended to provide for businesses oriented towards serving the motoring public. This district provides for the convenient exchange of goods and services along the major thoroughfares of the city. Of course, the subject site being located on Townsend, that certainly makes sense here. Per the city's municipal code, automobile and other vehicle sales and service establishments are not a use by right in the B2 zone districts, and therefore, they are actually a conditional use permit, which is why we have this application in front of you this evening. This is an overview of the general site plan here, reflecting those display areas onsite. So the size of the display areas is significantly shallower than a standard vehicle parking space, just want to make note of that. So these areas won't limit access to and from the site, which is important. There's kind of a vehicular access there on the north portion that accesses the Big O Tire Center. If you actually parked a full-size vehicle there, it would completely block that access. So this just would not block any access to and from that business. So just wanted to kind of point that out. So full-size vehicle parking in these areas would limit access lane width really completely on the site, both internally and to the north there. So here's just some pictures of the existing building, specifically showing where that garage door is located. That's where those vehicles and motorcycles will be just pulled out to and from those display areas during business hours. And then here's the criteria from section 4-4-26 of our municipal code, which is the conditional use permit section. I know we've got several other items, and I'd probably rather not bore people this evening, but just wanted to point out, one of the criterions specifically addresses adequate off-street parking for the provided use. As I mentioned, there's no off-street parking that's actually affected by this application, and just wanted to kind of make it clear, while it looks like a parking lot, those display areas can't necessarily serve in such capacity. And then lastly, just the staff analysis here. So based on my previous comments, as well as the staff report that was in the packet, staff has concluded that vehicle sales, that vehicle sales use does meet the intent and performance standards of the B2 zone district, meets the conditional use criteria in section 4-4-26, and is also in compliance with the comprehensive plan and compatible with existing uses in the surrounding area there. As such, staff recommends approval of the CUP for Vemos Gear Incorporated at 1912 South Townsend. That concludes my presentation this evening. I do believe the applicant is in the audience for any questions you may have for him, and I'm certainly available as well. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Jace. If we could have the applicant come up if you want to, need to, if you're brave enough to. State your name and address for the record, please.
Jeff Kleist. The business is located at 1912 South Townsend Avenue.
And do you have anything to add to the staff's presentation at all?
Not really.
Okay. Then I've got a question for you. Haven't been down that part of town in a while, so didn't even know you guys were already in there. It looks obviously there's a sign-up and everything else. There were other businesses in that building. Have you guys bought the whole building? Or are there still other businesses operating in that building and the one that's behind it?
There is a dance studio behind our building, and then there's a laundromat as a separate building on the same lot.
Okay. So you guys just have that front section of that building?
That's correct.
Okay. And how does that, yeah, how does that affect, like, how is the parking, kind of, is the parking lot divided up by the businesses that are in there? Are there certain areas of the parking lot that are kind of tied to your business versus the dance studio versus the laundromat?
So the laundromat has its own separate parking facilities, as well as the dance studio. The dance studio has the back portion of that building, as well as along the very back of the building. And then we utilize some of the front areas, as well as some of the, along the side of the building.
Okay. And what are your, what are your business hours?
Tuesday through Friday, nine to six, and Saturday, nine to four.
Okay. You guys have any questions for the applicant? Go ahead, bud.
A question, maybe, two, is this on? It is on, okay. Two questions. So, one question or concern, and I guess the question is to you, is, I don't know, you know, how, says how wide the area is on the presentation, doesn't say how big or tall the vehicle is? And so, I guess, have you parked a vehicle, the one that would be displayed at the sidewalk, and see how that might affect visibility? Because when I pull in and out of those businesses on Townsend, when there's signage or some big, something big and dense that you can't see through, if I'm pulling in and out and trying to gauge traffic, have you, have you parked the vehicle there near the sidewalk and seen if it does impact visibility if you're pulling in and out of the?
Yes, I have.
Onto Townsend?
Yes. I use an old motorcycle as a display out there every day, and I pull it back enough to give visibility to the oncoming traffic and everything. And that site plan shows that that area used for, in front of that sidewalk there, will be pulled back, you know, a foot or more, to keep it off the sidewalk, and also to allow that visibility to, you know?
Okay.
Allow that visibility.
And maybe a second question? Thank you for that answer, just in part to clarify from, it's a clarification, maybe in part from what Jace was saying, but on the photo, I think, of the front of the building, it does look like there are currently parking spots where the vehicle that would be against the building would be displayed. So it would, it would go in lieu of those couple parking spots. Not that that is, you know?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thanks. It's like a...
So, when the designated area that is farther east, or closer to Townsend, that designated area, when parents or users of the laundry are using the north entrance, they're going to be driving through the middle of your sales area, you could say. You're going to have your sales area out front, there's going to be this driveway, and then you're going to have your sales area in the back.
You are correct.
Or have you pulled a full-size UTV out there to see what that's going to do to impact? Because I agree, I've seen your motorcycle out there, and it's no impact, from my observation, it's been there for a while, that motorcycle. But a UTV seems like a much bigger vehicle to potentially impact that, the folks coming in and out on the north side, north entrance.
I understand that. And my intentions are not to sell UTVs, just for the simple fact that my garage space is 300 square feet, and if I have one UTV in there, my garage is full. I would be much better served, and I'd serve my business much better, if I stick to motorcycles. And that's kind of my intention, so.
Okay. Thank you.
How many motorcycles do you think you're going to fit in each one of those spots?
Probably between four and five in each spot. And that's, it's a limitation of my evening and nighttime storage, so.
Thank you.
Do you have any other questions for the applicant? Jeff, thank you. Do you have any questions? I've got a question for you guys real quick. So the conditional use permit is to allow sale of automotive vehicles. Those spaces, so allowing the sale of vehicles doesn't allow the applicant any variance on setbacks and stuff, as far as where those staging areas are? I'm just thinking of how that relates to the other automotive dealers, you know, along the highway.
I agree.
You know, are there setbacks that are required of them that aren't required here, or are they still applying to the setbacks by having those two display areas, you know, a foot from the sidewalk? Is there any issue with that? Obviously, this is not for variance inclusion, this is just the ability to have automotive vehicles there, so I just want to make sure that we're not going to have any issues. If this gets approved, automotive vehicles start going in and out here, and we've got, you know, around the edge of property line, where they're actually not supposed to be.
From a setback standpoint, a great question, Commissioner. From a setback standpoint, these are more or less a non-issue, they're not permanent structures, so there shouldn't be any concern from that standpoint. And also, the site plan really runs with the CUP effectively, so this display area is essentially what will run with the land and future applications. Let's say if this applicant decides to switch ownership for whatever reason, that CUP can, in theory, continue, but it would have to abide by essentially what we've laid out this evening. I guess legal can certainly chime in if there's anything else.
Well, I think he nailed it. I would just say it slightly differently, and hopefully this is helpful. This is a use, not a variance. So we're changing or allowing an additional use, perhaps, that you couldn't have had in the existing zoning, but we aren't changing setbacks or other things which would be done through the variance vehicle, if you would.
All right, then we will open up the public comment portion for this agenda item. If there's anybody out there who would like to comment, now's the time.
Could I just remind the planning commission to please turn on your microphones?
Yep, sorry. Yeah, so planning, oh, sorry, public comment portion is open for another couple seconds, unless I, all right. Seeing none, we'll close the public comment portion. And just bring it back here for any discussion that we have.
So my question would be for Jace, or Ben, or whoever wants to speak up. We have our, our motion alternatives that you've given us, and if we were to give, to give you a motion, can we remove the word automotive, to be specific, that we're not approving automotive sales there? We're only approving UTV. Sorry, no. Sorry. We're only, within this motion, that we're only approving UTVs and motorcycle sales, and to remove the word automotive? And does that work for you guys?
I believe it works from certainly the planning side. I'll look to our legal department to confirm that.
Well, this is a little off the cuff, so forgive me if I'm misspeaking, but I suspect the word automotive came out of the language in the code.
That is correct, yeah. And that is, that is true, how our code defines this use and why it's a CUP is automotive, essentially, is the terminology used. So I don't know if that plays a part in, in the decision or not here.
There's usually a certain amount of interpretation involved in trying to, which bucket does this thing fit in?
Right.
When you're looking at the words that you find in the code. And this particular use is very similar to the sales of automobiles, functionally, so that's why we use the term. I don't see a problem making it conditional. Certainly, the code allows for that in the conditional use section. So if you wanted to approve it conditioned upon something or other, you would need to put that into your motion.
Okay.
To limit sales to sales of...
UTVs and motorcycle, or whatever my motion might be.
Correct.
Thank you.
And I would say, since they do travel with the property, it's not a bad idea. We don't need Cadillacs being sold there in 20 years, so.
Yeah. That's a good point, where it says other vehicle sales, other vehicle, we could sell one of your trucks, and it wouldn't fit.
Yeah. If you were going to do that, then I would suggest that we bring the applicant back up to make sure that they are okay with that. Would you like to do that, Chad?
Yeah.
If we get the applicant back up here, Jeff, if you want to come back up, just so we can...
Sir, if we approve this, how do you feel about us adding a condition that it is for automotive sales, specifically motorcycles and UTVs? Any concerns?
I don't have a problem with that at all. That's exactly my intention, so.
Very good.
It's perfect.
Thank you.
You guys have any? Yeah, it's Chad's fault. You guys have anything? No? Steve? Okay. In that case, I will entertain a motion.
Okay, Ben, feel free to coach me if I'm missing something that you would recommend. So I hereby make a motion to approve the request to allow the conditional use of Vemos Gear Incorporated to utilize the subject property for automotive and other vehicle sales with, within the B2 highway commercial zone district, with the condition that the automotives that are being sold are motorcycles and UTV vehicles only. The request meets the code criteria based on the evidence and testimony presented at this hearing and as outlined in the staff report.
Do I have a second?
I have no suggestions to improve that. The language you used came straight out of the code.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And are you guys, like, okay with Chad wording and anything else?
Yes.
Okay. In that case, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion passes unanimously. All right, agenda item two.
All right, good evening, everyone. I have a brief presentation to share. I will start it. So for the, excuse me, for those of you who have been on planning commission for a while, you may remember the subdivision coming to you previously. This is The Falls at Valley Ranch subdivision, located north of Otter Road and south of Ockden Road. The parcel in total is approximately 130 acres in size, though this amended preliminary plat covers a smaller area of seven single-family residential lots, and also includes an outlot A to be later subdivided and developed. These seven lots are located within the R1 very-low-density district, and the outlot is zoned partially R1, R2, and R3A. You've all seen this before, and this application did go through the preliminary plat process and was approved previously. This is an amended preliminary plat and PD, which means it does need to go back in front of the planning commission and city council. We use the same subdivision review standards. The proposal should be consistent with the master plan and subdivision regulations. These are all the same review criteria we looked at during the previously approved preliminary plat for the subdivision. Now, the reason this is coming back to you is because the applicant has decided to move forward with a plan development application. These applications allow for flexibility in the scope and design of required improvements and design standards, and these may be allowed to provide for innovative urban design, which promotes the public health, safety, and welfare. With a PD plan, we do require 20% open space, and the plan must reasonably preserve and protect rural character, scenic views, drainage areas, and other valued resources. The overall density within a PD plan must adhere to the zoning requirement, but there can be some flexibility at a more specific local level. The applicant tonight is requesting a deviation from the standard road template, including irrigation, utility, and drainage improvements. And this is, I think, the first of three times you'll see this slide tonight. The comprehensive plan is not a legally binding document, but it does provide guidance for zoning and other land use decisions. The future land use map illustrates general and somewhat flexible locations for various land uses and densities. This area in total is listed as residential mixed-density medium, which allows for a variety of residential types mixed within a neighborhood, including single-family homes, townhomes, duplexes, and triplexes, and part of the outlot is also designated as secondary center. The R1 very-low-density district requires lots to be at least one acre in size. It's pretty self-explanatory. I included the other zoning districts here, but keep in mind that all of these lots fall within the R1 district. The proposed use as a single-family subdivision is a use by right. The zoning is compatible with general conditions, and the property is adjacent to areas zoned R1A large estate district, R3 medium-density district, R3A medium-high-density district, as well as properties outside of city limits. And here is the plat itself. This first page consists mostly of signature lines and plat notes. And here is the subdivision overall, which includes the outlot, as well as more plat notes. And then, this zooms in a little bit on the actual seven-lot subdivision being proposed with this plat. This is similar to the subdivision that came before you previously, but as mentioned, has an alternate road template and does include 20% open space. And this page is the plan development plan, which shows the deviations from city standards, as well as the areas designated as open space as required by PD. And finally, this page shows some more detail about the alternate road template that would be approved with this PD plan. So in conclusion, staff finds that the plat is in compliance with the subdivision regulations and the comprehensive plan, and meets the intent of the zoning district. Staff recommends approval of the amended preliminary plat, plan development. There are motions for two separate actions in the packet, and these should be voted on separately. And with that, I would invite the applicant to come forward, state your name and address, please.
Good evening.
David Coker, 501 East Main.
Thanks, Dave. Do you have anything to add to William's presentation?
No, it's pretty good. We just changed the curb and gutter, basically, is what we changed.
And could you just go over, like, what it was that you changed?
So, the original that was approved called for, as a subdivision, it called for detached sidewalks, curb and gutter. And we wanted, we never did really want to have that, because it's large acreage, so we wanted that country feel. So this was an opportunity, because of some other events that occurred, that we could make that change and go back to a standard road with sheet drainage, basically, like a country setting. So we did away with the sidewalk and the curb and gutter around the main road, which is 480 feet, something like that. The other roads are private in there, so it just pertains to the public section.
Okay, is that, that's why we're not seeing this on here? Like, if it was like Lot 1, you know, it's not anywhere near...
No.
Where this is going to, and that's because from there up, it's going to be a private road for?
Correct. The first cul, it goes to the first cul-de-sac.
Okay.
And then everything's private from there.
You guys have any questions for David? Gentlemen? No? Chad, Steve? Nope. Okay. Thanks, David.
Thank you.
Yep. You guys got questions for staff? No? No? Okay, then we'll open up the public comment portion for this agenda item, if there's anybody out there. All right, there isn't. So we will close that and bring it back up here if you guys have any other discussion that needs to happen. I mean, I think, as far as the comprehensive plan goes, you know, keeping the PD, keeping it rural and all that, this actually probably is a better solution than before, so.
Yeah, it's great.
Okay.
Great.
All right. In that case, if anyone's ready to make a motion, I guess we got to do the preliminary plat first, and then the PD. Staff, is that correct, as far as the two motions, or can we do them as one motion?
I believe the PD would actually come first.
PD first, okay.
Yeah.
All right. In that case, we'll entertain one for the PD.
Is that not?
There, there you go.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, guys. I hereby make a motion to recommend to city council approval of the preliminary plan development application. The request meets the code criteria based on the evidence and testimony presented at this hearing and in the staff report.
All right, do I have a second? Richard, thank you. Any discussion? No? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. All those opposed? All right, PD passes. And then I will entertain a motion on the preliminary plat.
I hereby make a motion to recommend to city council approval of the preliminary plat application with the following condition: The approval of this preliminary plat is expressly conditioned upon city staff ensuring that all policies, regulations, ordinances, and municipality code provisions are met, and that the applicant adequately addresses all of staff's concern prior to the execution of the final plat. The city staff is not authorized by this approval to execute the final plat prior to all conditions being satisfied. The request meets the code criteria based on the evidence and testimony presented at this hearing and in the staff report.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All right. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. The plat passes as well. All right, so that brings up tonight's third agenda item, and before that, we've got a commissioner that's going to recuse himself for this agenda item. So, staff, you could just remind me to bring Chad back in when we're done.
We won't forget about you, Chad.
Yeah, thanks, Chad. The problem is, I just, the floor creaks the entire way. All right, staff, good to go.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
So this is a proposed rezone of Outlot 1 of the Cook Rubish exemption for boundary line adjustment, or more appropriately, part of Outlot 1, as well as associated rights of way.[1799.63] This is a general map showing the portion of the property to be rezoned. This is at the northeast corner of sixty-seven-hundred Road and Oak Grove Road. The area to be rezoned is approximately eight point four-two acres in size, and is currently zoned R2 low-density district. As previously mentioned, this one property currently has two different zoning districts, the other portion being R3A medium-density district. This is called split zoning, which is generally not a good practice in planning, and city staff generally supports avoiding split zoning, or as in the case here, rectifying that if that's already present. The area outlined in blue here is the area to be rezoned, and is part of the same property as the R3A on the southern end of the property. This is a more detailed map of the current zoning conditions of the property. The area in pink here is the area that is proposed to be rezoned with this application. When looking at rezone applications, we do look to make sure the amendment to the zoning map is not adverse to the public health, safety, and welfare, and that the amendment is in substantial conformity with the master plan. The proposed R3A zoning is intended to provide an area which is suitable for single-family, duplexes, and multifamily with intermediate overall density. According to our comprehensive plan, this is listed as residential mixed-density low, which is primarily for single-family homes and small amounts of attached residential dwelling units like duplexes and townhomes. When looking through our comprehensive plan, we do also have goals that support this application, including promoting higher-density infill and redevelopment of underutilized sites, such as we have here. We also have some housing goals, including promoting housing variety and promoting a mix of residential housing types and densities. We also want to encourage increased access to affordable housing, including a mix of housing price ranges, and increasing the number of choices for residents of all incomes and ages. Staff finds that the proposal meets the rezone criteria as stated in Section 4429A. The proposal is in compliance with the comprehensive plan, including housing goals and objectives. It is compatible with the existing uses in the surrounding area, and will fix the issue of the split zoning on the lot to match existing zoning conditions. City staff recommends approval of the rezone application, and with that, I would ask the applicant to come forward.
Hi, good evening.
How's it going?
Rick Brown, and the address is twenty-twenty Pate Pony Court, and that's in Gray Junction, Colorado, eight-one-five-zero-seven.
Thanks, Rick, do you have anything to add to staff's report?
No, I'd probably just, the only thing I'd probably add is I think we have R4 zoning that's directly to our east. I just felt like this was a nice way to kind of flow that in, because we have some R3A zoning already, and we also have some R3A zoning to the east, and so the R4, oh yeah, to the west. And just thought it was, you know, a nice compliment, just kind of matching those up together, but that was it. Do you all have any questions for me?
Thanks, Rick. Go ahead, Steve.
I guess I have a question. What do you have any plans about what to build on the site?
We didn't do anything with plans, because we didn't know where we were going to end up, so we haven't attacked that site at all.
Okay, yeah, no, okay, no. I mean, something that would require R3, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Well, we don't really, I hate to answer it, because I don't know, we don't even have a designer really doing anything on it yet, so we haven't got that far at all.
Phoebe? Jen's down there? No? Richard? Ron? No? Okay. All right, thanks, Rick.
Yeah, you bet, thank you.
You guys have questions for staff? For the staff report? No? Ron, do you have any questions about staff report down there? Okay?
Yes, I have questions.
Staff, just add, just for clarity and thoroughness, on the map where it shows the zoning here, that you labeled the zoning R3A below and R4 to the west, but what's the north? It looks like northeast there, those are, those look like, what zoning is that? That just was left off, and, yeah. Is that our, do you know what zoning that is? Yeah.
So, all of the properties to kind of the north and the east of this rezone application are currently zoned R2, and then there's R3A to the south and R4 to the west.
Okay, so you said, oh, could you repeat that real quick? So, to the north and to kind of, you said to the north and the east is?
What's on Meadows Parkway?
Yeah, good, so that's all R2. So, everything that's this light shade of yellow, including the, currently the property in question is all zoned R2.
I see, okay, that's, it is labeled, just the color that is R2 is the color of the property, okay. So, all the surrounding neighborhoods then are R2, okay.
The other side of that is R3A again. Yeah. You guys got any questions for, other questions for staff? Nope? Okay, let's open up the public portion of this section. Other folks out there, okay, give me one second. Got to read my spiel here for everybody, just in case, we got comments here, and then I guess on the last agenda item as well. All right, so the public comment portion of tonight's agenda item is time when concerned members of the community may publicly voice their concerns on the agenda item being heard by the planning commission. If you'd like to comment this evening, please raise your hand, and you'll be called up to the podium. Prior to any comments, please state your name and address for the record. Your comment period will be limited to three minutes. These little lights up in front of us here kind of indicate the minutes that you have. As soon as the light turns red, we'll ask you to stop and return to your seat and finish whatever thought you're making. A spokesperson may speak for multiple members of the public. Let's see, comments made during this time should be addressed to the planning commission. Please do not turn around and start talking to the applicant or to staff, you need to direct all your comments to us. And please be aware that neither the planning commission, city staff, nor the applicant are expected to respond or engage in discussion or debate during the public comment period. The planning commission will ask questions of the staff and applicant after the public comment period is over, as we deem appropriate. We allow everybody to speak once until everybody's had an opportunity to speak. Please limit to your comments, please limit your comments to items that add to our discussion tonight. Personal attacks and disagreements, personnel and employment matters, the use of profanity, ethnic, racial, or gender-oriented slurs are prohibited, as is any disorderly conduct which violates state or local law and shall not be permitted. Once the public comment period is closed, the planning commission will not accept further public comment. And with that, sir, come on up.
My name is Dave Stockton, three-zero-zero-nine Cook Drive. I'm here to speak in opposition to this application. Mr. Brown appeared for you recently in regards to another, not a zoning, but a build-out of Eagle Ranch South. And with respect to that, Mr. Brown and I and my wife had a conversation, and he told us at that time his intent for construction is semi-custom ranch-style homes, single-family homes. And we took that as the extension to this application here, because at the time, he was looking at acquiring that property. So, the current R2 low-density fulfills what he had told us and what he talked about as single-family homes. And rezoning this area to a medium-high density is really incompatible with the neighborhood. We're all single-family homes, we're all ranch-style homes, and we really don't want to go with a 3A designation that will allow multifamily dwellings, apartment buildings. So, if one of the ultimate goal is to rezone a split zoning, the R2 zoning that's currently in place meets, excuse me, if you combine the current R3A to R2, that would meet that goal of eliminating that split zoning. And furthermore, this is as a kind of an aside, but hopefully it strengthens my argument. In our current subdivision, which is directly adjacent to this property, it's part of the original plat, two thousand and five, that, the original plat showed Sarah Elaine and Cook Drive hooking up with Peyton Place. And that road was supposed to help with the drainage. And we have a problem with water in that subdivision, because those roads were never completed. So, any runoff we have is building up and causing ponds that weren't necessarily supposed to be there. There's a holding pond area that we believe is a holding pond, the city believes is a holding pond. Mr. Brown says it's not. So, in short, the current residents of the subdivision do not want to see this thing approved until such time that those streets are extended back to Peyton, which will ultimately have to be built out when Mr. Brown builds on this new area. But more importantly, we do not want to see apartment buildings in our area, particularly since everything else is single-family homes or duplexes.
All right, thank you, David.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else out there that'd like to speak?
Larry Taylor, twenty-two-hundred Sarah Elaine. In opposition to the zoning change. Why? We're all single-family, single-story, ranch-style. It's just not conducive to the area, apartments, so on and so forth. I don't know where I come from, we do environmental impact studies when things like this are done to determine the effects on the neighborhood, streetlights, roads. And I'll go back to drainage, which is non-existent in our neighborhood, because the project never got finished. So, what would happen if the developer of ownership now goes in, says, oh, I could only get this partial street done, and I'm belly up. We're back to square one where we're at now. If you don't get the infrastructure in, what are we doing? Piecemealing things together. And I'm just in opposition, I've been in building for twenty-five years, and I've seen things go on here like the SWMP, the EPA Stormwater Act, which is federal, dropped down to the states, states drop it down to the counties and municipalities. We're getting away with murder here. So, you know, we're a small town, but we're growing big time. Could have to step up sooner or later. But I'm definitely in opposition to this. And thank you for your time.
All right, thanks, Larry. Sir?
Hi, my name is Bob Cornish, two-two-zero-eight Sarah Elaine. We're all neighbors, I didn't know that we were going to, all three of us be here. But Gene and I purchased twelve years ago, with the understanding that it would be single homes for that area. And a couple of years after that, two thousand and nine, we purchased. Two thousand and eleven, the developer, they had issues with the water, with Richard Cook, who was our neighbor, who just passed away, and we loved him dearly. There was a fight, of all places in Colorado, water fight. Well, it happened, and the developer lost everything. The, then it went belly up. Eagle Ranch, I believe, was at development. But we were under the understanding that it would be a single-family area, and we hope that it will continue to be that way. They had no animosities with the new developer, Rick, I have yet to meet him, the other people have, but I think we would, I think we were in all agreement that we would like to have it single-family homes, no duplexes, no high-rises, or anything like that. Thank you for the time.
All right, thanks, Bob. Anyone else out there? Going once? All right.
I'm Nana Busalair, six-six-one-eight-five Largo Lane, which is the other side of that property. We're kind of just catty corner to it. But we were also under the impression that it would be single-family homes as well, in that area. And we don't want to, we don't, and water, water's the other issue as well. And we're actually from Lakewood, we moved here a year ago almost, and we love it here. And before we even came here, we prayed for rain, and we had good snow, we had good rain. And I just, it's, I see building all over, all over the place, and I feel like water is an issue, and so you have to kind of limit what you have in the area as far as family homes and things like that. So, looking for the future, just want to make sure that this is, you know, it's still a small-town home, and that's what we came here for, and that's what we want to continue to have, so, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, anybody else? Okay, we will close the public comment portion for tonight's meeting. Rick, would you mind coming back up, please? So, Rick, it's challenging as a planning commission to approve these types of things when there's no plans, and I understand you're not, you're not, you're not forced to disclose any of that right now, because it's not what you're asking for, you're just asking for a rezone. However, would you please address at least the one issue that is very clear, that you're asking for R3A? Part of this reason is because of split zoning issue on the same property. Why can't you just take the other portion that is R3A and make it R2? What's the, can you just go into that a little bit, please?
Sure, the R3A simply adds more flexibility. Putting in anything this now is super-expensive. Everything we do is expensive. There's a huge goal of trying to get, you know, affordable housing to people. That's hard to do. And I'd like to be really clear that I have nothing to do with whatever the previous development was, what they did or did not do. I have seen the previous plat that was approved, and I can assure you, it has very, very tiny little building envelopes for each house to be placed on. Very tiny. And so, I've seen that, I've looked at it, and I've reviewed that. As far as comments made about me saying I am wanting to build ranch-style houses, that pertains to Eagle Ranch South, which has nothing to do with this, different ownership group. I am simply assisting them in working with you all to get that project approved. And that is the intent, we are not requesting a zoning change on that, that stays at the R2 for that exact purpose. That's exactly what our intent was, and that's exactly what I said, and that's exactly what I'm doing. This portion is different. It's a different owner. It's a different project. The R3A zoning provides flexibility. It's also a nice transition. It already has R3A zoning. There's R4 zoning, you know, immediately to the west. So, it's a nice transition. We're not looking to build project housing or anything like that. One of the comments was apartment buildings, we're not building apartment buildings. Are we going to have some duplexes or triplexes? Probably. I don't know that, but probably. But we're not looking to build an apartment complex, that doesn't do us any good either, we don't want that. I think there's a place for apartment complexes here in Montrose, and I think it makes a lot of sense, but not in that location. So, I'm not in favor, or nor do I want, to have apartment complexes there. But do we want a little higher density? Yes, we do. And I think it's important that we have that, I think it fits into the plan. I think it's appropriate to be able to provide housing that's affordable, not just for younger, newer people, but also for our seniors. There's lots of seniors who like the idea of a lock-and-leave place, where they're not tied to a mortgage, and they're debt-free, and they're living in a smaller place because they're traveling. So, I understand the concerns, we're not here to build an ugly project. We want to build a nice project, but we do need the higher density.
All right, thanks, Rick. Do you guys have any questions for Rick before we? Before I go? Steve? I can see the wheels turning, so.
Fire away.
Okay, all right, thanks, Rick. If we need to bring you up, we will again, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Staff, could you, does anybody have the quick number on what, what is that density difference as a use by right from R2 to R3A? Do math really quickly. Come on, Scott. Fire that out.
So, yeah. So Jace has it up here. R2 for a single-family lot, the minimum lot size is 7,500 square feet. And R3A for a single-family lot, minimum lot size is 6,250 square feet.
Okay.
Yep. Go ahead.
A question for staff, and I don't know off the top of my head, but is there a zoning, the applicant mentioned, you know, having an interest potentially in duplexes and triplexes, but not an apartment building? Do we have, can you remind me, is there a zoning that would allow for duplexes and triplexes but not an apartment building?
So any, any triplexes would be considered, for the purposes of our code, a multifamily development. So a three-unit apartment complex, R3A is the appropriate zoning designation for a triplex.
So if we went down, though, to include duplexes, say, in single-family homes, what zoning are we at then?
Jace is just double-checking here so I don't... All right. So duplexes are used by right in the R3 zoning district, and I believe triplexes would be considered a conditional use in R3.
Still use them. Yeah.
And then can I ask a follow-up question? So I see just on, and then you can correct me if I'm misinterpreting this, but in the staff report, it sounds like the current comprehensive plan land use map does designate this parcel as residential low. Correct?
That's correct. Our comprehensive plan generally shows the, for residential density, it does generally show the existing conditions of the property. That is really something that we would like to...
Yeah. I would say the comment about the, the comprehensive plan is that the, the future land use map isn't the future. It's, it's the present versus what we want to see, which is hopefully something we can remedy.
And it's certainly something that we'll be looking at moving forward. It's something I certainly recognize coming on staff. But yeah, William here is spot-on.
Okay. Steve, anything else? You guys have anything while Steve's looking? Richard?
I see what you mean about that light. The, I think the applicant makes a good point on the flexibility from current zone to the rezone. There's, we can't make our decision on what might happen when he comes in with a sketch plan until we see that. We can't comment on, okay, no apartments, no this, no that. But the level of flexibility is something that should be considered for a developer if it is in line with other goals established by the city. And the staff assessment is that your proposal is in line with those goals. The promises made or, you know, future prognostication about water problems, those need to be addressed in the sketch plan. When you bring something to us that we can see and make a comment on, and mitigate water issues, mitigate roadways, mitigate light pollution, that's the proper time to do it. So I don't, I don't see that keeping it at R2 serves the interest of the developer or the city in terms of the goals that have been established. Now, when you come in with a sketch plan, there is going to be a consideration of how it works with the neighborhood. You still can build single-family homes here, but in a slightly reduced lot based on the minimum lot sizes you were talking about. And another issue with the city is sprawl. I think smaller, tighter density is better for the environment overall than one-acre lots, which we just approved in the previous get-go. So I see giving a developer the flexibility to consider options, I think, is a good thing. What those look like when you come to us, whether we would think that what you're presenting is a good thing, is another issue. So for the, that's my thinking on this initially.
All right. Thanks, Richard.
I was, I was basically thinking the same thing with the water issue. When it comes up with the preliminary plans, the water issue will be addressed at that time, not, not in today's meeting. And that, that's kind of how I took it. I just want to say that I agree with what he was talking about. Thank you.
Yeah. No, yeah, 100% question discussion time. Yeah. I mean, the, from the, it's tough with these, with the, with the rezones, because if there's no, if there's nothing else going on, we're just saying, you know, this or that with all the future possibilities and everything else. And although it's not part of our code, part of the requirement for the rezone is that it is in keeping with the comprehensive plan. And one of the biggest things that did come out of that is housing, and it is a huge, huge issue, not just in Montrose, but in western Colorado. And I, I just did the quick, I think, I think I did the math right. If, if it was, you know, the minimum lot sizes, the difference is 10, about 10 lots. Is that a lot?
The difference between?
Between R3A and R2 as far as the minimum lot size. So you could put roughly 50 in there at the minimum size and roughly 60 at R3A.
Yeah. I think what I would think, I would be the R3, that would be the conditional use on the triplex, but then would not allow the apartment building. I think that falls...
No, no, I was just going to say, if we, if, because you did mention it, and just remember, if we, we can't approve R3 because the application is to go to R3A, we, we would either have to ask the applicant if they would amend their application here or have another meeting, you know, vote, vote it down and then have another meeting to do R3. Just so you guys know, that's the, the process for that. We can't just change it because the application is for R3A. Yeah, we've, we've...
Yeah, President, we're similar.
Yeah, we've tried that before, so, yeah.
I, I would comment just...
Yeah, go ahead.
To the idea about, again, whether it is in conformity with the master plan and in congruity with the surrounding area and the idea that, that the, that the master plan, even though we have a future land use map which designates it low-density, and we kind of want to say that, well, that doesn't matter because that's, that's not the current attitude that we're taking to the land. But I, I would respond by saying there were other areas in, in our, in what we have as the land use map now, which we have designated for higher density. And so presumably that was a meaningful, that distinction still means something to us. It's not that we didn't have any areas that we have, have identified. And so, yeah, and so, I mean, it seems to me, we've talked about this before in cases where, you know, staff might recommend that, you know, it, it does meet this, you know, rezoning qualification, say, for 3A. However, it also might, you know, meet the zoning qualification for another zone. And so I, I, I don't think that we can discount the land, the land use map and if it does have a recognition it's a lower density, simply because the city has another point in there about encouraging housing variety, because that need is met precisely through having different designations in the map, right? There are, the map was created with the idea that we are going to designate those other areas, and that's why they're...
Theoretically, but yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I think the, the problem with the land use map is that, yeah, all the high-density stuff is all the stuff that is currently high-density versus where we want to see higher densities. The other thing, and this has come out before, and staff, if I'm incorrect, you can correct me, but I, I'm pretty sure that when we've done the code to comprehensive plan, like language map, the comprehensive plan does use that mixed-density, mixed-density low, but R3A is one of the zones that can fit in what we are considering mixed-density low. Is that accurate?
So in the comp plan, we don't necessarily state specific zoning districts that would comply with a future land use map. And I think that's something that's important here, too, is the future land use map is not the only item in the comp plan that we should be looking at as we look at rezones. So when we're looking at, you know, other policies and guiding and guidelines within that document, we're looking at, you know, density standards, efficiency standards of infrastructure, that comes with density, right? So when we think of higher density, you think of essentially shorter sewer stub lines, more efficient sewer connections. You have more homes served on, on more sewer and water connections. So there's, in theory, more efficiency there. So those are other components that, that really fall within that comp plan discussion as well. So yes, I, I realize there is this, this somewhat of a flaw with our future land use map as shown, and, and you all have seemed to have caught on to that as well, something we'll look at. But there's certainly other components, as William has described in the presentation as well as the staff report, that, that we look at when we're looking at the comp plan as well.
All right. Thanks, Jace. And the other thing, just for, I think, just for the record and for those that were concerned out there, is that, you know, a lot of the issues that, you know, you as neighbors and residences in the development have, if the lot doesn't get developed, none of those are going to get addressed. If the land gets developed, then many of those will have to be addressed as part of, whether it's this process or other building code processes and site plans and all that, like, you know, drainage, lighting, all those things will get addressed. None of them will get addressed if the property stays dirt, which, if, if the developer needs greater flexibility, because economic times are the way they are, that's something to consider as well, just for, for you folks out there. It's not part of our consideration here, you know, for a rezone. It either meets the code criteria established by the city or it doesn't. But just so you know where, kind of how the process works and kind of next steps. Is anybody, yeah, yeah, go ahead.
You really do have to look at this a different angle, even though if it's on, so I apologize for that. To the four residents that came up and talked, trust me, we, we get what you're saying. We've heard it before, and quite honestly, personally speaking, when somebody, when I see a zoning change to R3A, it brings out some PTSD in me. I just like, oh, my gosh, you got to be kidding. I, I get it. I totally 100% get what you're saying, and I hear your, we hear your concerns. But the reality is, is not near as bad as what you're thinking it could be. And, yeah, I think that David has done the math, and that something's going to happen there, so it's, it's not going to be near, I think, you think, you feel like you're going to look out your back window and there's twin towers out there, and I promise you, it won't be there. And as far as the water and all that goes, that will be addressed before anything really happens. So I would just say thank you, and we felt, we felt your angst, but just take a deep breath, and I can guarantee you, it's not going to be as bad as what you think it could be. How do I know that? I don't know that, but I can rest assured that the city will work with plant developments, and they'll make it, they'll make it work for everybody, even the water. So that's what I will say. Just be patient, take a deep breath, thank you for coming. I know it was heartfelt, and I appreciated your comments. Yeah.
Can I say one more thing?
Uh, I'm sorry, you can't. We've closed the public portion. You can come talk to Phoebe afterwards if you need to.
I could talk to Rick, too.
Yep, or that, yep.
But I just wanted to throw it out there before you guys made your decision.
Sorry, David. We, we can't. After we've closed the public comment portion, I can't open it up again. All right, guys. Is anybody prepared to make a...
Can I just add one more thing? So I, I do think, again, if the applicant described wanting to build maybe triplexes, duplexes in homes, and we have a zoning for what he described wanting to do, and that's three, not 3A.
Yep.
And I think we had a precedent like this, which was a similar situation. I'm just...
No, I would say, would you like to bring the applicant up and...
Yeah, and so...
Rick, would you mind coming back up, please?
Steve, go ahead, bud.
Okay. Yeah. Just what, you've heard the discussion, what would you think? And I get, I think we said the precedent last night, we can't do it in the moment or something, but what do you think about this idea of there's a zoning which is three, and you could do the duplexes as a use by right, and the triplexes would be a conditional use, and you come back and you'd say, I want to be doing triplexes, but it would rule out the apartment complex? What do you think about switching your application to that zoning? Again, there's no pressure, you don't have to do that.
No, no, I'm, I'm happy to...
That's a possibility. What do you think about that?
Sure, no, no, thank you for that. But it also gives me an opportunity to share with you all, because I hear you're loud and clear on not being in full support here, and that's okay. That's okay. We need everybody's opinion. I want to be crystal clear that we are not going to do apartment buildings. That is not going to happen. Will I need to do a triplex or a fourplex or a duplex? We will have to do that. It doesn't pencil out if we don't. I'm sorry, but that's the math. Development is very expensive, and so we have to do that. And it would be irresponsible of me to say, yeah, go ahead and just do R3, because R3A lets me do that zoning by right, which is very important if you're going to drop a million dollars of investment, right? I, I can't make a million-dollar commitment and hope that you guys might say, yeah, we'll give you the conditional use for those, those other, you know, units over there. You know, you just can't take that risk. And I, I feel like my request was fair. I didn't go for R4 zoning, which is immediately across the street, right next door to us. I felt like that was too high, and it's something I didn't want to do. But I do want to be clear. I think it's important with my developer hat on and my, don't hold this against me, I have a banker hat, too, on, you know, you just can't take that risk of saying, hey, I'm going to drop X amount of dollars for maybe being able to get an approval for what we need to do, so this pencils out. You, you can't do that. But I specifically said I'm not going to go for R4 because I didn't feel like it was the right match, because I think there's a nice transition now with existing R3, finishing up the R3. And you'll, can you bring up the map again that had the zoning on it? Yeah, that one. So you'll see there's a, on the east side, there's a real small sliver, that's R2. The very next sliver over is R3A, and that's several acres. That's a large area. So I just, I felt like the request made sense economically and with what's out there with the existing property, property uses as it is. So I hope that kind of answered your question.
Yes, it does. You answered my question, and we could, yeah, go back and forth about, that's, I don't think that's my role, so.
Yeah, and me, me either, me either.
Yeah. So, thank you. Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Anything else? Yeah, you guys have any last-minute questions for Rick? No? Okay. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Well, is anybody willing to make a motion? I would entertain one if so.
I would like to make a motion.
All right. Go ahead, Richard.
I would like to make a motion to recommend approval of the rezone request of the Eagle Ranch South rezoned to R3A, medium-high-density district. The request meets the code criteria based on the evidence and the testimony presented at this hearing and in the staff report.
All right. Any discussion? No? All right. Do you have a second?
I have a second.
Ron? Sorry. I was supposed to do that first and then ask for any discussion.
Okay. Now do your discussion.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
All right. Motion, motion passes four to one. All right. Can we bring Chad back in, please? There he is.
That's what I'm saying.
Yep. No, but that's, I mean, that's why, Steve, I'm proud of you, stuck to your guns, I like it. That's, no. All right, let's go ahead, staff.
All right, thank you. So this application is in regards to the Hilltop North addition. This is a proposed annexation in the northeast part of Montrose. This is along 6600 Road, a little bit to the north of its intersection with Locust Road. The property is approximately 10.01 acres in size. It's within the city's urban growth boundary, the city sewer service area, and the tri-county water service area. The area is urbanizing, and more than one sixth of the perimeter of the property is contiguous to existing city limits. The property borders existing R four high-density zoning districts, as well as properties outside of city limits. The applicant tonight is seeking R four high-density zoning for this annexation application. This is intended to allow for variable densities and variety in the types of residences, including for multifamily residential development. During the annexation process, which does include many steps as required by the state of Colorado, the Planning Commission does make a recommendation to city council for a zoning district designation for all property annexed into the city. The zoning designation shall not adversely affect the public health, safety, and welfare. Here is the annexation plat. This does include the property, as well as half of the adjacent road here. Our comprehensive plan shows this area as residential mixed density medium, again, provides for a variety of residential types mixed within a neighborhood. I talked briefly about our comprehensive plan goals and objectives before, but again, one of our goals is to promote infill and redevelopment of underutilized sites, as well as promote housing variety, variety in densities, including mixed-density neighborhoods, and increase access to affordable housing and encourage a mix of housing price ranges. This property is within Growth Area Two, which indicates the property has some level of or moderate proximity to existing infrastructure. And so in conclusion, the area is urbanizing, and more than one-sixth of the property borders existing city limits. It does require an annexation agreement, and properties over 10 acres require an annexation impact report. This is 10.01 acres. The proposal is consistent with the public health, safety, and welfare, city and state annexation policies, and the comprehensive plan. Staff recommends approval of the proposed R four high-density district. As, as said previously, the Planning Commission shall make a zoning recommendation to the city council. And with that, I believe the applicant is here.
I'm Jackson Berry, 330 McFarland Court, Grand Junction, Colorado, 81501. I represent Hilltop Health Services, and I'm, they're, they recently annexed, I don't know if you guys were probably sitting on the board at the time, the 16 acres to the south. They recently purchased the 10 acres just north of it. The Del Tondo sold it to them, and they wanted to incorporate it as part of the project. Happy to have any questions.
Yeah, you guys have any questions for Jackson? Chad?
You bet.
So, just like the last property, give us an idea, what's going to happen here at this big site that continues to grow?
Yeah, sure. Well, I don't know how much further it's going to grow, but right now, this is as far as it's going to grow. There's no plans to grow elsewhere. But, so the, the plan, we hired KTGY Architects out of Denver to do some conceptual designs of the site, and those designs have ranged anywhere from 335 units with a mix of apartment, two-story apartments, walk-up apartments, townhomes, and duplexes, to a similar mix of 292 units. And so the higher dense, so Hilltop looked at the higher-density one and thought maybe it was a little bit too dense, and so they scaled it back to 292. The portion that we're looking at tonight, that would range from 135 total, if we went with the higher-density plan, down to 100 if we used the lower-density plan, which is what they preferred. And that was just to, in, you know, to have a bit more green space. There's a, there's a leasing office in the southern portion of it. All the, all the, the walk-up apartments are in the southern portion of it, which, which has already been zoned. This portion would only have, it would have all of the duplexes, actually, it would have half the duplexes, 16, and the remainder of them would be townhomes. So there'd be like a row of six townhomes, I think this is the max that we have in a row. So there'd be like a one-story on the end, and then two stories in the middle, and it would be spread out across the 10 acres.
And why do you feel like this level of density is necessary for that piece of property?
Well, so Hilltop's been approached a number of times from the, the Housing Authority, Montrose Housing Authority, and from some other places. They, they like, I mean, it's an investment opportunity for them. They purchased, they traded the land on the south for another property from someone else, and then they were looking to see what they could do with the property, and in order to maximize the value of the property, and to, you know, be able to contribute in ways to the affordable housing, they, they decided to move forward with a rezone on that project. And when the opportunity came to purchase the property to the north, they, they thought that economies of scale made sense to add additional similar product types to the north.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Other questions?
Anything else over there, Steve? No? Maybe, give you a minute?
Maybe. I'm always trying to get guidance about how relevant is what I'm saying to discussion, but someone on Citycan staff can always, or chairman can tell me, hey, you know, this is relevant. But I, I didn't know, is it going to be, is it, you know, market-rate housing? Like, what is the, is it traditional housing? Is it, what, can you say anything about that? Yeah.
Yeah, there were discussions, so they, they've had discussions as far as, like, do we, do we turn it into an affordable housing situation? Do we go for getting tax credits to pay for the housing project? Do we do, you know, some sort of head loan to get that, to get the financing for it? But there's been no determination as to how they would build it out. I mean, so the options range from going, you know, housing some of the, you know, doing affordable housing, to going full market rate, selling it off to a different developer, to partnering or joint venturing with another developer, or something like that. The project itself is probably a bit too, I mean, like, they probably wouldn't take down the entire project themselves, but they would probably stay involved in some way if they could.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, from, all right, Jackson, I think we're good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else got questions for staff? All right, all right, let's open up the public comment portion. Come on, John. Come on.
John Renfro, 760, 6600 Road. There's probably 100 other things I'd rather be doing than be here, right now. So, just to let you know, when the last pieces were put together, the surrounding community just came out in droves. I mean, we had 70 different people coming through, opposition. When we did the other piece, we had 56. We had several people coming through me, saying we should come through and just try to band together. Just to let you know, I stifled them, because I don't, I think the probability of this going through and getting overturned is pretty low, in my opinion. Here's the thing, I just wanted to just kind of go off and communicate. One of the things that Hilltop was going to go off and communicate, they were going to go to and try to communicate some specific neighborhood, community meetings, to say what they were going to do, how they were going to do, and that was never communicated. One thing I think that would really be helpful for not only planning and staff, is try to encourage that type of stuff to help things to go more smoothly when we're going through with some of that stuff. Obviously, with regards to the R four zone and stuff like that, you know, that's too high zoning enough for the other people going through, because Hilltop may not have it. Someone else may get that later on, they may sell it, may fill up other stuff like that. We can pick that up, and we're going through the subdivision process at a later time. But, you know, the, the thing is, is that there's certain things that I personally don't think that it adheres to. I don't think that it is safety, what we're going through. I mean, we'll have to worry about the roundabout, we'll have to upgrade the traffic, what we're going to go through. We got all the stuff for the roads on, you know, the, out to the landfill, and all the logging trucks kind of going through, so that's going to have to be addressed. I'm not sure, my opinion is it meets the master plan at all, because it's medium-density when we're going through and doing that. And that's subjective when we're going through and doing it, but the site keeps on expanding, expanding, and there's no input that's coming back to the community on exactly what these guys are doing. They're just saying, we need more stuff, and we don't want to have any shackles, and we'll figure that out later. And so the, the thing is, is that we need additional housing in Montrose. I mean, if there's a guy that kind of understands that, it's me, I mean, we need to kind of go off and do that. It's just, it needs to be planned, it needs to be communicated, so that all people kind of understand when we're going to go through and do it, so we can kind of work together collectively, is at least my two cents. So, at least, for what it's worth to me, I didn't want to go through the, the brain damage nor the other people that we were dealing with to kind of go through and do that other stuff, because I think it was just a waste. But I told them I would come in here and just tell them my mind, and where to kind of go through, just because I thought it was the right thing for me to go off and communicate, so that you guys can hear, at least a member of the public, at this point in time. So, I had nothing further. Unless you guys have any questions for me.
Appreciate it, thank you. If you have a question, go ahead. On the original petition that was presented when, with the other property, did the Del Tondo sign that petition? Were they for this development, or they were against the development?
The, the Del Tondo's were not part of that. There was other people that were part of that going through. I think that we, it was primarily a lot of the people that were in Crossroads Estates, which was the development right down there, and there was a lot of the homeowners, primarily on 6600 Road, that, that came through. So, on a plus aspect, just so you guys know, just to commend you, I mean, I think that you guys are trying to plan things correctly. The piece across the street, Calvin's piece, you guys did R three A, and the people were really surprised by that. So I, I know you guys are trying to control that growth, trying to monitor it when they're going through. It's just trying to figure out how to communicate that effectively when we're going through, primarily to the constituents when they're going through. Hilltop's a large organization when they're going to go through, and so it's a little bit frustrating to the community when they say they're going to go off and communicate to the community, and then they do not, and then there's a petition that comes in and says, this is what we're going to go do. When they have no plans, they don't know what's going on, they have no other insight kind of going through, so everybody's kind of blindsided. They have a short amount of time to kind of react when it finally gets presented in the paper, so.
Good. Thank you, John. Thanks, John. All right. Scared everybody else off, so. All right, there we go. All right, we scared everybody else off. Anybody else out there that wants to comment? Nope. You guys? Go for it.
Because this is actually the one, no, sorry, it's me. This is actually the property I was talking about.
Okay, well, go ahead and state, state your name and address again, force, please.
I'm sorry, what's that?
State your name and address again for the record.
Nina Buselair, 668-185-Largo Lane. That is actually the property. I was, I was wrong. Yeah, just, again, it has to just deal with a little bit more information. I saw a picture of, I just don't want things too tall. That's the thing. It's just too beautiful around here to, to break that, to block our view. So, I guess, that's just kind of what I boiled it out to. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Nina. Okay, with that, we'll close the public comment portion, and bring it back up here for discussion. Lady and gentlemen, comments, questions, concerns?
Similar to the last one, the staff has ascertained that this is an appropriate zoning. I haven't heard no basis why it could not be, considering the adjacent properties are for. Again, many of the concerns people have, we will address in the sketch plan and preliminary plat. I haven't heard a good argument for not R four, in other words. But any arguments related to resources, land use in the future, we take up when we see it in that design. We, we know what the concerns are of the, of the residents. We also know that there is still a need for higher-density development in Montrose, for the, some of the very reasons the planning manager mentioned. In that case, I'm inclined to, once again, provide the flexibility to allow people to design what they think is needed, and when they bring that, then we can say, well, that doesn't really fit, you want to do something else, I mean, in the sketch plan process, and, and try to massage what they're doing. But for the purpose of the annexation and the zoning designation, I don't see any real issue at that point.
Thanks, Richard. Chad, do you have a comment? Before I, I was going to ask staff something, but.
No, no, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay. Could you guys, because this is something that I know, Steve has brought this up before, and I think it, I think it is important, and going to put you on the spot a little bit. Quite often, if something's made it to being in front of us, you're not going to, you're not going to bring something to us that you don't see, you know, meets all the code criteria. And one of the big ones being what Mr. Renfro brought up, you know, the safety, you know, that it meets all the other things that, you know, kind of, kind of the soft, touchy-feely stuff that's in the code. What are the, so, when you're, when, when, when you present us with this R four, as, yes, it meets the code, have you guys gone through, do you use the, like, the, the use by right as the, like, hey, here's what they could do if it's R four, here's what it could, what they could do later on, and if they did that, traffic's not going to be a problem, sewer's not going to be a problem? Or do you not make, does any of that come into the decision-making process at this stage, or does it all get pushed off until there's actually a site plan, and then you work through, okay, well, yeah, you could do apartment complexes, but the ones that you guys want to do, you can't do because there's not enough sewer here, or there's not enough drainage here, or whatever? Could you just talk through a little bit about, if we're saying that, you know, R four's a lot of density, which we, we've dealt with this part of town before, we, we know that R four is a concern there because of the density, but we're also saying at the same time that that density isn't, that density is in, in, like, conformance with the city code, so otherwise, we wouldn't be, you guys wouldn't be giving it to us at that, at that level. You would have worked with the developer to come down a notch. So can you guys just talk about that just for a second?
Yeah, I think I understand what you're asking. The, so we work off of the information available at the time. So when a, when a zoning application comes in, the range is really big of what that could be, and the impacts are really large. And then there's a time element of that also. So, you know, what the road is in front of it right now, and the intersections that it feeds are likely very different from when it develops. You know, we've seen some annexations that don't develop for 20 years, and so, you know, to try and take a guess at what that would be and what the infrastructure looks like, you know, with, with enough money, infrastructure can be made to work anywhere. And at the end of the day, when a development comes in with a development proposal, if, if it can't be safely done, it won't be approved. And a lot of times, you know, if it's off-site stuff, those are things that the city would take on to improve and try and support those developments in the name of housing. But, yeah, at the end of the day, there's that protection. That's when you have a subdivision application, because then you can compare what they're proposing versus the conditions at the time. Because those conditions, you know, not only do what could happen on the land changes, but the baseline, the infrastructure that we're tying into also moves with time, based on other development that goes on that brings, you know, road extensions out, or, or utility extensions out, or, you know, city's capital, you know, implementation of our capital plan changes those things over time. So, we don't go too deep into that speculation. Really, if there's something, it'd have to be really glaring case that there's something very obvious about this that is not safe at this level, which at an annexation is, it's, there's never been that precedent where, again, because it's, again, with enough money, things can be made, you know, infrastructure can be made to support things. So, it's kind of a generic answer, but I hope that answers your question.
It does. So mainly at this stage, when we're saying that it meets the code, what we're saying is that it, it's really more about the, the part, parts of the code that say, you know, we don't want the split zoning, we don't want, you know, random zoning all over the place, we want to be, things to be more, you know, in Congress with what is next to it and everything else.
Yeah, the heaviest or comp plan compatibility, those things, safety is still a portion of everything we do. It's just, at this stage, it's rare that there would be something that would drive an overwhelming, this is unsafe, because it's, the sky's the limit.
Yeah, whether it's safe or traffic or whatever, and I get that. Yeah, whether it's safe or traffic or whatever, and, and I get that. I just want, mainly for the record and for the public to understand that, but, um, because it is something I think we, we struggle with a little bit sometimes up here, is that, okay, well, what actually, if you guys approved it, or you think it, you know, meets the code criteria, but what, what was that thought process to, to say that?
Yep.
Um, so...
And I can, I can jump in a little bit and just piggyback off that. I think that was really well put. Um, if there is something big, or some, some major red flag, we flag that certainly for the developer, right on the front end during the annexation and zoning process. So, certainly keep that in mind. This isn't just going through, uh, you know, without any eyes on it from staff. It does still go to multiple departments at the end of the day. Uh, the other thing is, when it comes to infrastructure, and it comes to, quite frankly, all our residential zones, they all allow single-family at the end of the day. So, let's say, we do rezone this R4, and in theory, there is water or sewer capacity issues down the road. Um, it could develop to a lower density. Um, it would just accommodate a higher density at the end of the day. Um, and that's, I think, a good, good point of clarity.
All right. Thanks, Jase.
You guys have anything?
Sure.
Go ahead.
So, when realtors are selling a piece of property, I absolutely love that they always put on the pieces, on the, the land, you know, ready for development, you know, you know, great opportunity for development, because it tells every neighbor, something is going to come to this piece of property in the future. So, there's no surprises, where the citizens are grumpy going, I never knew there was going to be, you know, I would have, I never knew there was going to be this many people. Um, and I don't know, maybe this piece of property had that sign, maybe it didn't. But, I do wonder, let me go off onto a different tangent. I, I start to wonder, when do we have too much R4? And when have we put too much dense housing in one particular area of a community? And being blunt, is this particular area of Montrose getting its excessive fair share of high-density housing? And what I'm talking about is, there is plenty of R4 around the, the, the area. There's, it's just a dense area already. So, when does it become too dense, that it does become now a health and safety issue? Jess, or anybody who wants to speak up?
Yeah, and I'll, I'll jump in, and, and other staff can certainly chime in as well here. Um, I think it, it's a good point to be made, um, and I think right now, what we're looking at is, is the zoning piece, right? Um, there is other R4 zone, zoning designated areas around, too. Um, a lot of those are not developed, though, and that's something to keep in mind. Um, again, R4 can be utilized for multifamily, but it can also be utilized for triplexes and single-family. And as things actually develop, that's when we understand the capacity better, uh, from an infrastructure and design standpoint. So, when it comes to, you know, the, the sketch plan, or the PD, um, for, for a multifamily facility, that's really when we get into the weeds, uh, on the full, full-blown infrastructure and design standpoint, and really get to better understand what capacity thresholds actually are. So, right now, it's tough to say, because there's a lot of vacant land that's R4, and that, that is fair. Um, but that, that is what it is, is vacant currently, so.
So, when the next property owner goes ahead and sells to another developer, and we have yet another R4, and then another R4, when do we ever draw the line? Or do we draw the line, ever?
I think we certainly continue to look at it, um, at the end of the day. Um, it's, I see where you're coming from, and it's a totally valid point, right? What's the end? Where's the end game at? Um, I don't know that I can have a clear-cut answer for you at this point in time. Um, if there is, let's say, a 2,000-foot extension of water or sewer line that's required, we'd probably say, yeah, this isn't going to accommodate R4, right? And that's when we will really start to look at existing and proximity of, of some of those infrastructure services. I think Scott can probably speak a little bit more as to what currently serves this site, and what, uh, could potentially serve this site with relative ease. Um, but that was, that would be something that we would certainly look at, coordinate with our engineering and internal staff with, to determine, all right, this just seems too far, it's too out there, all these lots are continued, continue to be vacant, and we haven't seen those sewer-water main extensions. At the end of the day, I think we're looking at efficiency of infrastructure, though, right? That saves the tax, taxpayers' dollars at the end of the day, and, and provides infill and density where it can easily be accommodated. Um, but yeah, maybe, maybe I went into the weeds a little too much there.
I think, kind of random thought that comes to mind, it's, you know, kind of back to the first question even, um, you know, unique conditions that these lots have. Um, so this one is in Tri-County's Water District. Um, Tri-County doesn't provide fire protection by their statute, or by their charter, I guess, I don't know how they're exactly set up. But, um, so, to support high-density developments, that needs to be figured out. It's figure-outable. Um, you know, there's, that's, I don't know if that's a word, but, that can be resolved through either improvements to Tri-County's system, um, or if agreement for the city, and the city has the water resources to expand, to serve it, and Tri-County's in agreement, things of that sort. But, again, those are all details that go beyond the annexation. But that's, it is an example of, you know, where, where infrastructure absolutely, infrastructure's key on any development. It'll make or break it. And financially, um, if there's, you know, major extensions needing stuff, a lot of times it won't pencil out, they need to wait for the infrastructure to kind of work its way out to it. So, helps or not, but, you know, it's a good example that came to mind of, from that discussion.
Yeah, well, I think that hits on what Richard said, you know, just originally, that, you know, all of those things, like, this is just the first thing, we got to get, you know, you get, you get it past this, and then if and when it starts developing, yeah, I mean, if they want to put the mass, the most amount of density they can possibly squeeze in there, if the fire protection doesn't, doesn't, doesn't do it, it doesn't meet the threshold, then you can't. So, uh, it won't, it won't get approved from you guys, it won't get approved from wherever else. So, um, you guys have any other discussion? Questions? Sure, I'll throw another one to Jess, or whoever wants to do the math. If this was approved as R3 or R3A, what would be our density difference? Ooh, I just did that on the last one. Uh, I, I don't, yeah, it was, it was, it was 10, it was basically 10 units different, uh, based on the, uh, minimum lot size between, uh, R2 and R3A, so I think it's about the same. Compared to R4?
No, you did 3A to 3A earlier.
I did, I did 2 to 3A, is what I did. It's 10 units different, so 3A to, it just depends what the minimum lot size is.
Right. And when, when we look at multifamily, it changes a little bit, um, from the, the square footage threshold. So, it looks like, in theory, and William, correct me if I'm wrong, if I'm misinterpreting it here, but, um, it looks like for R4, if we're looking at multifamily here, um, it would basically be, uh, 2,300 square feet per unit, so 1 acre is approximately 43,000 square feet. Uh, and this 2,300 square feet per unit would be a density threshold for R4. Uh, density threshold for R3A would be 2,900 square feet per unit. Uh, I don't know the math off the top of my head in terms of what the total unit count could be there. Uh, it looks like Scott might be trying it just by hand, but there's, there's a difference.
Engineer.
There's no doubt a difference.
I challenge you to a math race. Yeah, right. Calculators, go.
That was 2,900 versus 2,300. Okay. Go ahead, Steve.
I'm just going to interject something, because it'd be bare or bad news, but I think we need some consistency around this. You know, we've had, just the previous application, we had a very similar issue, where an applicant was requesting a certain density, and just then, you know, we, I guess you weren't here, but I'll say, we can continue the discussion, right? But, and some people came up from the audience and said, hey, we aren't happy with this density. And then, and then we made a judgment that we would, it seemed like our deliberation was based on two factors. The city's recommended this density, and we don't see any other reasoning to the contrary. We're having what seems to me a very similar discussion. He's recommended a density, and, and we have someone in the, in the audience in the community who thinks, for similar reasons that the other people did, that we have less density. So, whatever we do in this matter, I think we need to have maybe a discussion out, it's our lawyer in a, a separate setting, but we need to figure out how we're, how we're deliberating, so there's more consistency around, around these matters going forward, yeah.
I, I see your point. No, go ahead.
I, I would say that, so, as long as the, and this has been what we've tried to do over the last two years, has been that as long as, if someone could sit out there and decide, and be able to tell why you, Steve, voted no, and why Phoebe voted yes, based on our deliberation, uh, then, then that means we're, we're doing what we're supposed to be doing. Uh, we don't all have to agree.
Yeah.
We can ask different questions, the same questions, um, based on what we hear, based on what we know about the project, or the, you know, in this case, this area plan. We've, we've seen all these in the last two years, so, um, and then you're very fresh in their minds and everything else. The, the issue becomes when you vote yes or no on something, and that's completely opposite of what you've been talking about up here.
That's a good point. That was just Chad's line of questioning. That was not our decision, and Chad can add the line of questioning and the reason for voting yes or no, and that could be contrary to our decision. I was sort of jumping to the gun, the idea that we would, as a group, deliberate in that direction. So, anyway, we'll...
Yeah, no, it's...
Point appreciated, but I think you see where I'm coming from.
Yeah, I think, I think you're right. It's, it, but it's also the thing, and I think we, we need to be aware that we can deliberate all day, um, and we can try to get, like, go towards consensus, but we don't have, we don't have to be there. Not every vote has to be unanimous. Um, and so...
It, you know, part of my big motivation is this is R4, which is a whole nother animal than R3. The level of density, to me, is pretty dramatic, and that's what I was, where I was hoping to get some different numbers. Maybe my mind is just crazy, wrong? Uh, maybe I need to be walked, talked off the ledge?
We've got some numbers for you, Commissioner. Um, so if we're looking, again, so late multifamily, if a, a multifamily proposal came in, if it came in as R4, it could allow for 189 units. If it came in as R3A, it could allow for 150 units. So, we do have, what, a 39-unit gap on 10 acres. Um, so there is, there is a difference. Um, it's a large piece of land, um, but at the end of the day, there is, there is a difference. Um, will the developer build it out to, to full capacity? Uh, I think that's, that's something we can't even speculate on this evening, but, um, yeah.
But I guess I'm, I'm not speculating when we've been told that they're seriously already considering 100 and, 100-plus folks, going back to my notes here. You know, we've already, it's already been indicated to us that they're talking about 100 versus 135. So, we already know that this isn't going to become single-family houses, most likely. There's always a chance they could sell it, but most likely, we're looking at 100-plus people for that additional lot, that additional piece of land.
Which is less than what they could put in there.
True.
Yeah, they're already...
So, true, true.
Just to throw that out, but, um, how much does it concern you?
It, it clearly concerns me, because we've already, that part of the community already is supporting a lot of dense housing.
But, well, yeah, well, and, and potential, potential more, right?
Right, potential more. Um, do we, it's disappointing that we don't have any audience here, besides our two folks. Um, so, maybe, again, I feel like, maybe I'm making a mountain of a molehill. But, do we also owe, oops, I did it again, do, do we owe anything to the rest of the, they're not even in the city, the next landowners. But this is now going from a rural community to a large development. And do we owe them anything with that immediate transition? There is no transitioning from single-family to duplexes, to high-density. It's, it's going to be an empty farm next to high-density housing. Do we have any responsibility to our community at large, which is the county, and all the, all those other residents, to see that dramatic of a change? And that's just general conversation, if anybody wants to...
Yeah, it's, it's a valid, valid question, I think. Um, I think the, as far as the, the county stuff, I, I think it's just being...
We can't answer that.
Yeah, I, I, I would say that we, that shouldn't come into our calculus, but, um, the, I just keep going back to what Richard said, and what I think staff confirmed, is that, how much of the R4 that's out there, even the R3A that's out there, um, is just sitting there undeveloped. It, you know, if it gets developed in 20 years, maybe it'll be apartments, maybe it'll be massive single-family lots, you know, with the largest lot sizes that they can. We don't, we, we don't know. Um, and at this stage, I'm, I'm inclined to, you know, the parcel below that is R4. We hit the road right there at the north of this, this parcel, um, and then that whole L shape is R4. Um, from the administrative side of this, it's, it's, it's cleaner that way. Um, and then, yeah, we, we see, we see when they come back in a year, or 10 years, or whatever, uh, with an actual plan of what they're going to do there. Um, it's just, yeah, it's too hard to speculate. I think, I, I do know that, obviously, we open it up to the possibility...
Right.
With R4, which is always kind of a struggle for us here, but, um, the part of the code that we're, we're kind of referencing here really is that, it, it, what's, yeah, what's it, what's it, you know, in Congress with what's next to it. And since it's all county land around it, the only thing next to it that's city is R4.
Yeah, I'll just comment, too, and since I brought up, I, I, I do think, and we're getting in a little bit more of a general discussion, but that I do think that, to answer your question about whether we have, uh, I think in the code, ensuring that it is in use with the congruent areas, that if part of those are completely rural and county land, I do think, and this came up before with the gentleman who came up and ended up, this came up before, and we, I think in that case, did talk about the idea of, the specific idea that if county land bordered something, then that doesn't count as zero, and if, if you're comparing how much, how, how much of it borders, say, R4 versus county, the county counts as something. Like, we should treat that as undeveloped land and be, or as rural land, and be, when we're making a judgment about whether a parcels in congruence with the surrounding land, treat it accordingly. Um, in the past, um, the way that I see this, I think it's, so it's a case, my answer to your question is, yes, we consider those things on a case-by-case basis. And the, to me, the one thing that does make this different from the previous one, um, is this one is, and, and again, we can say what we want about the comprehensive land use map, uh, we have one, and the code says that we should be using the comprehensive code for guidance, so I'm going to do that. And this one does say that this is designated for mixed-density medium, as opposed to the last one that said low. Um, and so, that's a different consideration, and the fact that there already is a, a project in development that this would be part of, and we do have a sense of what that's going to be. It's not an unknown. We know very close to what that, um, project is going to be, even if that wasn't communicated, which we hope everyone communicated, even if that wasn't communicated to the surrounding community in a way, uh, which would have been ideal. Um, so to answer your question, I think that we do, and I, I would apply that to the situation, but on the, based on those other considerations, um, you know, think that it might be outweighed by other considerations in this case.
Okay. Gentlemen?
Richard?
Phoebe?
Okay.
All right. Um, I will entertain a motion, if someone's ready to make one.
I'll make a motion. Uh, hereby, make a motion to recommend the...
Hello. I hereby make a recommendation to City Council approval of the initial zoning request of R4 High Density District. The request meets the code criteria based on the evidence and testimony presented at this hearing and the staff report.
All right, do I have a second?
No, sir.
All right, uh, any discussion on the motion?
I'm going to, I look like I just, I didn't realize that, I'll just, for the record, correct what I just said, because I, um, think I misspoke. So, just for the record, because I know, I keep track of your record. The, uh, that's incorrect, that actually the, our, what they're correcting is R4, and that is high density, which, um, does not accord with the comprehensive plant use map, which I just said. So, that might affect deliberations on it, my own. Okay, that's it.
Okay. Thanks, Steve.
Yeah.
Um, all right, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. All those opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so, motion passes four to two. What was that?
Just a tie.
You're right, that would have been interesting.
Well, technically, I'm, I would, I'm the tiebreaker, right? Supposedly. Okay, uh, next meeting, the 26th. Uh, I don't know yet, I'm, I may not be here. I'll hopefully know in a week whether I'll be here on the 26th. Chad?
Yeah, I'm not going anywhere, so...
Okay. Um, we do have stuff on the next agenda?
Yes, we do.
Okay, thanks, William. Richard won't be here either, uh, and I will let everybody know if, if, if I will be, um, as soon as I find out about some other things. Um, any other business? Staff? No? Okay. Uh, could you guys update us just real quick?
Could you guys update us just real quick on the, on the code updates, code revision? How's that going?
Sure, yeah, Commissioners, as far as our comprehensive kind of code update that's going on, we're right in the mix of it right now. So we have some, some drafts of some of the chapters from our consultant. We'll be, we dove into those, we'll continue to dive into those. There will actually be, I believe it's on our website, it's a link to our consultant's website that will actually be providing periodic updates here as well with some of the drafted documents. So not quite online yet on that regard, we're still, still a little bit early, but it is moving forward and we're certainly excited about it from the staff level, so.
Cool. And then Bennett, can you just confirm for us because Jay sent out some meeting invites for some things that are coming up with affordable housing and whatnot, trying to coordinate, just, hey, we don't want all of us there. We don't want to have a quorum accidentally. It's four people, correct? And if, if that were to happen, if four of us showed up at a meeting, a public meeting like that, what's the protocol? One of us just leave, just raise their hand, be like, I'll, I'll be the one to leave? Because obviously we don't want to do that, but at the same time, some of those housing meetings are pretty important.
Chance meetings in public don't require prior notice, nor would they require you all to, to actually leave or one of you to have to draw the short straw and walk out. However, this sounds like something that's easily anticipated and all we'd really have to do is send out a notice as we would for a meeting and explain what's happening. And I think that solves the problem.
Okay, so as long as it's public, if it's, hey, there's going to be a meeting at MADA on whatever day.
Right.
Then it's no big deal?
That's your most elegant solution.
Okay, cool.
And piggybacking off that, do we, do we know, I know I sent the, the invites out. Do you all know for sure now who will attend those meetings and who might not, or?
I will probably be at both of them.
Okay.
My, my wife runs the, Montrose is part of, what's it called, Housing Resources? And so she's putting on at least one of those things. I don't know if it's both of them. So unless I'm watching our kids, I'll probably be at both. So.
So we've got one on Tuesday, the 19th, or excuse me, Tuesday, the 18th of October. That is film showing at MADA. And then the second meeting I sent out, I believe, was, it's called building a development team. Essentially, it's just kind of looking at how to effectively build a development team for community members, city staff, others. That is on Monday, the 24th. And that is a virtual meeting.
That's a Zoom meeting.
Correct, yep. Yeah, and, and feel free, if, if you need more information or want me to resend out some information, happy to do that as well.
All right. Any other business, guys?
And you need to know if we're going to be there or does it not matter if you know if you can be there?
I think what we'll do, and I'll maybe look to our legal department here as well, but we'll, we'll just plan to maybe post notice regardless here. I think that it would better be safe than sorry. No harm in doing that at the end of the day.
Because I mean, I think from both, both of those, the people putting them on, like, from their perspective, it is open to the public, correct?
Correct.
So as far as posting, it's just saying like, hey, the city says it is too, right?
Right, and I think this is where I'll, I'll work a little bit with our city clerk just to make sure that we're doing it in the appropriate manner. But I think at this point in time, we'll just make sure that we provide the, the appropriate notice just in case.
All right. Cool. Sounds good. In that case, guys, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Boom. Adjourned.